All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission Study Session February 6, 2024. If you would like to address the Planning Commission this evening during the public comment period or for an item that is on the agenda, we request that you fill out a green speaker request card and turn it into staff prior to the agenda item. This meeting is being recorded and viewing is available via Zoom. The Planning Commission will receive public comment through email submitted prior to the meeting or to staff or in person. Public comments will not be accepted via Zoom. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chair Gerardo.
Here.
Chair Viensari.
Here.
Chair, Commissioner Madden.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon. It's accents. Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kim.
Here.
Commissioner Lethy.
Here. Doesn't wear any bar.
All right, thank you. And then Commissioner Maddox, you lead us in the. It's like your decision. Right along, item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals are allowed three minutes. It is the Planning Commission's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or where appropriate and and action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the commission from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda to pursuant to state law. Staff, do we have any public comments? Any? I don't see anybody here, but I want to ask.
We'll do that.
All right, great. In that case, I'm going to move to item number four, our study session, or A. Study session considering amendments to Title 12, Article 2 subdivision, and Article 3 zoning of the municipal code to improve planning permit process and other minor amendments, and I'll turn this over to staff.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Peter Gilly, I'm Community Development Director, and going to give a very brief presentation. The intent for most of the night is to talk about the actual content and materials. The Planning Commission, Council, and staff last discussed this the end of December, or mid-December, that should be, the 12th, at a joint, joint study session where the topic of changing our planning processes to address a number of issues on this, on the screen. This is literally the same slide that was used in December. And one of the main themes of the process changes was about trying to make a process that worked for nine out of the 10 cases. Instead of trying to make a process that works for all 10 out of 10, and you make nine of them go through a longer process than is needed, make it work for nine out of the 10, but you have an appeal process for the one out of 10 cases that need more review. There was acceptance of, of, of this at the study session with Council and Planning Commission. And as part of the staff's recommendation of changes at that part meeting, these were the main, main takeaways, all of which are reflected in the documents you have, have tonight. Staff also asked for feedback on whether the principles and the thresholds and the ordinance languages and, and such. We're going in the right direction, and again, the overall direction was positive. Now going to the first slide that is new, all the rest of, all, all the other ones that I have shown so far are just carbon copied. The document you've had today is a very brief staff report and a couple hefty attachments that have the entirety of Title 12, Article 2, and Article 3. Not just the parts that are proposed to be changed, but the entire, entire section so that you have the full context. And then in an attempt to make the proposed changes more easy to, to understand, a color coding process is, is applied. If there are strikeout or underlines in the color of green, those are either changes of titles, which staff considers to be almost a non-issue, or copy and pasting of sections. So if you see a green section that is struck through, it was cop, it was moved somewhere else, and is, is reflected underlined in green in, in another spot. Blue sections, these are kind of minor changes in wording, but not, not to the point where we think it's, it's meaningful. The purple changes are ones that, they, they are a change, but they are either in line with something that's already been talked about, or again, not something that is, is viewed as needing a lot of attention. The orange are the ones that staff recommends the Planning Commission start to give more attention to. These are what we consider more, more substantive changes. The red, and there's only one section that is red, is what we consider a major change. This is tied to the housing element implementation. So while it's a major change, we do have a policy in place that, 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 that calls for that change, but nevertheless, it is a major change. So in general, staff's recommendation is for Planning Commission to give the most attention to red, the second most attention to orange. You have more attention, give that to purple, and then if there are parts you were maybe just going to skim or skip over the blue and green, there, there are not as meaningful changes in those sections. Now, a PDF was sent early or slightly early to, 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 to the commissioners before the packet. Changes have been made since that PDF went out, and those are highlighted in yellow. So if you did exhaustively look at, at the first document, then you can easily see what changed in, in, in the packet material. admittedly, most of the yellow highlights are in Article 2, and most of them came from comments that came from our city attorney's office. Again, we colored those as either mostly green or blue because they, we didn't think they'd changed the process or modified something that would be important to the community. They were mostly things that the attorney's office has seen other ordinances, other subdivision ordinances have, and that we should have it, or in some cases, language that didn't make sense, and they had improved language for. You don't see as many yellow highlights in, in the zoning section that probably there are two or three at most. That's because we're still waiting on getting the final comments from the attorney's office on Article 3. So the expectation is the document that you're going to get at the public hearing on the 20th is going to have some changes from what you see tonight, primarily recommended edits from the attorney's office. We will color code those accordingly, probably not yellow since we've already used that, but there are other shades that we can highlight in Microsoft Word. So that's kind of the background of how we tried to convey the materials. Very briefly, we have a summary slide of the notable changes. So this is orange or red. These are also listed out with a little more description in, in the written staff report. We can come back to this if, if the commission wants to talk to this, but we can also go directly to the word document itself to talk about, about the code section if, if that the commission wants to talk about those. On the left-hand side, the numbers there reflect how they are listed in the written staff report. They don't mean anything to the ordinance itself, but it's just, it's just for reference in that manner. I do not plan to discuss every one of them, but I can talk about any of them if the commission would like to talk about. Moving on to schedule and next steps. So the next steps are, before the next Planning Commission meeting, staff's going to receive the edits from the attorney's office. There are a couple of other edits that we, we already know we, we want to make. One is to add a reference in the ordinance to the residential design guidelines, because I think with your experience, you've seen the guidelines claim there's a section in the ordinance that states that the guidelines are applicable. There actually is no line in the ordinance that says that, so we want to add that. And then if there are any other final edits that we see as we go through this, again, we will, we will call those out. Then there are certain things that we wanted to do, but are probably going to have to be pushed out to a future amendment. Back in December, one of the first things, I think, one of the first things on the list, just because of how it was ordered, we don't have a section in our ordinance that talks about how to process a general plan amendment or development agreement. We have not gotten around to do that. Interestingly, interestingly enough, most of the, of the zoning ordinances in this county don't have those sections. Other counties I've worked in, those cities had those, so we are looking around for templates to, to to build off. So that's not going to be in this, in this package. That will have to be done in a, a future amendment. We also tried to make a land use table similar to what's in the mixed-use ordinance that instead of having a list form of the allowed uses and, and the conditional uses, is a table that shows multiple zoning districts by column and then, and then the rows of uses. We wanted to make one for all the tables. We weren't able to do that as quickly as we'd like, because when you get to the commercial and the industrial uses, there's not a great alignment between the older zoning ordinance sections and the newer types of uses that are in the table. So we do hope to get that done, because I think that will be very much easier for property owners, residents, or business owners, as well as staff, if such a table existed. And then lastly, there was a, a hope to have a streamlining effort that tree removal permits on private property can be part of a decision that the Planning Commission or the Planning Department made. That requires an amendment to a different title, and so we're going to pick that up in a, in a, a future amendment. And then also, in the coming years, we're going to be bringing in number of code amendments to Planning Commission to catch up on state housing laws. So the package that's going to be coming to you on the 20th, believe I put in a prior, prior correspondence, it's, we're not saying it's perfect, but we're, but, but with the time we spent trying to make refinements, we think it's a much better step in the right direction. We do not view this as a one-time thing. We want to keep on improving things. Also, if we change something in this round and we find it's not working the way we thought it would, we want to actively relook at it and adjust it back or, or make changes accordingly. So as far as schedule goes, this is a slide shown from, from the, from the meeting in December, the planning process improvements. We're actually not on this chart. The PC on there is, is representing the PC hearing that's going to be on the 20th. So we're actually, uh, we're actually before that, Council will meet in March. And this is going to tie in importantly to the master fee schedule, because for the planning applications where we're changing the process, most of them, we're making it a less costly process. And so we need to amend our fee schedule, which is going to Council at the end of April. Those fees need to be approved 60 days prior to going into effect. And so the timing will work out so that the profits improvements we're talking about, as well as those fees, will go into effect the start of the new fiscal year on, on July 1. So that is why whatever ordinance package we have, we want to have it adopted by Council in March. So if there are certain changes that Planning Commission has concerns with, happy to hear them. What staff may do is simply move those off and put those on for a future amendment, if you're not comfortable with how they're laid out now, or if it's an easy change, we'll just make that change. But the idea is get the, as much as we can, adopted by Council by the end of March, so that July 1, the new rules and the new fees are in effect. And with that, are we able for any questions? And as I said, we have the word documents of the two other sections, so I can pull those up if you want to look at any specific sections, and I can answer any questions you have about any of, of the changes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want us to comment as you move along, or do you want our questions currently?
Yeah, I mean, at, at this point, that concludes our, our report, our presentation. So if there are any type of questions about specific changes, overall philosophy, schedule, we're happy to talk about any of them now.
Okay. Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay. So, uh, let me just go into the details. The, uh, the ministerial review, of course, in for the multi-haven asset. You have, uh, there's this, there's a basis. It needs to be 75%. Is there a place I can pull this out? Um, yeah, it's 12, 245, oh, 20, applicability.
Yes.
Section A1, memory, memory, AB1 or something. Mid 75% of the whole floor area, the building including lobbies, common area, et cetera. So that means, so, so what's the basis of this? You know?
Yeah, so, so the first part of the section, Part A, talks about if you're a multifamily housing project that meets certain criteria, you can be go through a ministerial process, and it's basically what's in the housing element policy. Section B talks about if you have a mixed-use component. And what we didn't want to have happen was that someone was willing to put a mixed-use storefront into a housing project. We didn't want them to lose the ministerial process, to which point they'd say, we don't want to do the mixed-use part. So we, we built something in that if you do a mixed-use building, as long as 75% of the area is residential in that building, the commercial part could go with the ministerial process. The 75% is not, it, it, it's a number that was picked just because orders of magnitude, three-fourths. It, it, it felt appropriate. We thought about, do we make it the ground floor? Well, what if someone comes in with a mixed-use concept that works for two floors? Did we want, you know, to limit that? So that's, that's the approach we took, and we tried to be as clear to the, to as possible that we want to let the residential building, the lobbies, the common areas, the hallways count towards that 75%? We weren't trying to, we weren't trying to, you know, nitpick. It's like, if 75% of the building is for residential use of some kind, then you get to stay in this process.
Yeah. And I, so I think I got that. One issue is parking on this, and I, I think your intent is that parking specifically for the tenants is supposed to be under residential area? But.
So if, if, if it's within the building, then the parking just for residential, we would count towards the 75%.
Yeah.
If it was parking that was shared, then it wouldn't count for the 75%. If it was parking in the building only for the, only for the commercial or maybe office use, that would count towards the 75%.
And what if the parking's unbundled? Okay, so I'm thinking there's some scenarios here, or we get in trouble, because parking alone is going to think of, I mean, if they do a one-to-one ratio, it's a lot, right? Like, they're gonna, they're not gonna meet the requirements, but I think we want them to meet the requirements, especially, you know, they're doing what we want. So I have to think through this number a little bit more.
Yeah, so the, the, the concern is, and, and fully agree. The concern that we had was if, if a, if a ground floor of the building is all parking, which is, is what we see, and maybe they go down, maybe they even go up too, you know?
The patel lining, right?
Yeah. If that parking was for the parking and drive-aisles for the residential, we didn't want it to take away from that 75%.
Yeah, right.
Now, maybe something that can be done here is that because it's unbundled.
Share.
Yeah, maybe share.
You get in trouble.
Maybe change it, parking that can be used for residential, that isn't solely for non-residential, gets to count towards the 75.
Yeah, I, I think we're on to something that might just need some wordsmithing. I understand your intention. I completely agree with it.
The other thing we could do is, we could say that if a, a, a project, I mean, we could do a number of things. It's, it's, it's a new ordinance. And it's only talking about a process. It's not talking about the end result of what's built. So the nuances of what falls, what ends up on this side of, of the line or that side of the line, they can build either. It's just one goes through a ministerial process, one has to go to a hearing. We can go so far as to say parking and drive aisles are not counted at all towards the total area of building, or it's deducted, and it's 75% of what's left. And that takes parking completely out of the picture. And that should still protect most projects that will go mixed-use. It would still allow them to stay in, in, in the ministerial process.
And yeah, I think that would accomplish your sample. And just about that, it discusses a minimum of 20% of units as BMR in order for it to be ministerial. Just, my remembrance, the current requirement in San Bruno is 15% during.
Correct.
So why not 15%?
The, this, it can be, this is put forward as an attempt to be an incentive to get more affordable housing. So that if a project, if, if this were passed as, as is, the number one part, the larger paragraph means if you're on the housing element, let, on our housing element map that we're counting you towards our arena, then as long as you put the number of units that, that it says in the housing element, you get to go minister. Number two is, if you're not on the housing element map, if you're a site that we did count, then the, the attempt is to have the ministerial process be a incentive for someone voluntarily doing more affordable than our ordinance requires. So that's why we went with 20%. Also, we say 20% lower. Right now, our, our, our BMR is 5% moderate, 5% low, and 5% as very low. So this is saying if you want the ministerial process, the no-hearing, the no-notification process, you have to do 20% lower, which is just the low and very low.
Yeah.
So, so developer would have to choose what's the financial benefit of faster and no-hearing versus, versus more units. That number can change. If, if, because even if the Planning Commission changed it to 15, but kept it as lower, it is still better than what we get out of our existing ordinance. It, it wouldn't be more units, but it'd be, all of them would be in the lower, very low.
So I would propose that we keep it as the current, and the reason is the market force is already preventing development in San Bruno. And so if we want any build, then we ought to make it easier for them. I mean, that's, if there hasn't been any projects. So we're, we're trying to, you know, we're doing this ministerial process to, you know, try to incentivize. I think if you want even 15% affordable housing bill, we, yeah, we, we should, we should relax this a little bit. So that, that's the way I would propose to go. I don't know how that sounds in this meeting here, but that's what I would. I had a question. Minimum density, is that observed anywhere, and are we covering that?
I don't believe we say anything about minimum density in the zoning ordinance.
I didn't, I didn't think so either. Had, had that been discussed in previous meetings that I'm sorry, missed on us?
In, in general, we wouldn't be comfortable with putting minus, minimum density into the zoning ordinance unless we had a general plan policy or a housing element program that, that, that called for us to do it. Now, that doesn't mean it still can't be proposed, but we didn't bring it forward because that went beyond what we committed to in the housing element. Again, it doesn't mean we can't.
Yeah.
In, in a, in a slight way, the, the fact that if you're a housing element site and you build less than what we take credit for in Arena, then you don't get the ministerial. That's kind of, again, a, a stocker approach to try to say, please build the maximum that we think that site can take.
Okay, so, so it is. It's, it's not stated you need to achieve a minimum intensity, but you don't get the ministerial process unless you achieve the, that.
Yeah.
So, so it's there. Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Cool. Thank you. What other folks? Questions, comments, suggestions?
Okay. Um, let's see. I, I got caught up on funny little things. I'll start with the most important stuff. An observation that I have is, it seems that as we're removing the Planning Commission and the more tedious process, we are putting more on the plate of the Community Development Director. And I was just curious how that is going to add to the workload, and there's going to need to be some sort of extra support. It just, it just seems like a cross-out Planning Commission, and then it, it got put on the plate of, of that position, and I was just curious what that would mean.
Yeah, in, in general, because we're not necessarily adding new types of permits or new type of applications, it's just, like you say, it's the existing volume, just shifting. Although, there is an expectation that that we will get more permits for things that become administrative, that decline to attempt to go through the process when it was a, a public hearing, but the amount of staff time that will be needed for the administrative items will still be less than what's needed for a, a full-blown hearing. And just for example, when, when I previously worked for the City of Mountain View, I was their zoning administrator, and I was the hearing officer for a lot of these types of things. What ended up happening was that, for example, the staff would not have to write as exhaustive of a staff report. The presentation could be a lot shorter if it did even require having a public hearing. And thus, the, all the little bits of savings still ended up being far more than, than the added work, because at the management level, all the staff reports are still reviewed when it comes to this type of hearing. They would still be reviewed otherwise, and, and the administrative hearings that we do have are probably not going to be that long, because again, what you've seen is not a lot of people show up, or the minor ones. If it's a really big project, you'll get some people. So overall, it's, it's still viewed that this overall package is going to free up far more staff resources than it's going to use.
Okay, good. That's good. Uh, let's see, the, oh, could you just talk a little bit more about the removal of the ARC, the Architecture Review Committee, and how I, if there, there were benefits of having it, and then obviously there was, there were drawbacks of having it, but I'm just curious if you kind of give us a stretch of, yeah.
So at, at the, at the, at the macro level, the, the ARC responsibility, this, this, this package identifies certain, certain thresholds where that ARC responsibility just shifts completely up to the Planning Commission, or it shifts to, it shifts to the administrative level. So the benefits to ARC The benefits to ARC. Was viewed as being able to accom- accomplish almost all of this. With the full planning commission for the larger, larger projects. When you factored in some of the drawbacks of ARC. And the drawbacks of ARC is not a case of the members, um, not doing well, it's simply. If you've got an item that starts at ARC and it ends up at planning commission. Well, the planning commissioners who aren't on that ARC are going to have ideas about, about the design. And it's just going to be natural that they're going to want to talk about some of them. Um, and under the ARC to PC, uh, approach, you either have a planning commissioner. Choosing not to bring it up because they're like, well, the person already went through ARC, or bringing it up, and then the applicant. Feeling, boy, hey, I thought I already went through architectural review, and so. Again, if it's important enough that the PC is going to see any part of it. Have the PC do the entire part of, of, of the AR, of, of the ARC. For cases involving housing, because we are being forced to, uh, we can't be as, uh. Subjective on things, it has to be more of the objective, uh, in all likelihood, um. Uh, there's only going to be one meeting now, in the case of commercial projects. I think there's, there's, I have an expectation that they might go to more than one PC meeting then. The first one would be, uh, more introductory ARC-like, uh, where. And maybe it's even much earlier in the process, while it's, it's still going through all the detailed review, so the, so the planning commission can. Give some direction on it, so the final product that comes back to the planning commission has already addressed a number of the issues, you know, that you've had, so. So, we think that there's going to be ways to still keep some of the benefits, um. There's going to be a couple of cases that come forward where it's going to be like, you know, if we had a subcommittee, this one project might have gone better, but again, our hope is. Nine out of ten, and, end up going better, and, uh. Uh, we welcome hearing anything from the commission as we go through and, uh, uh, adjust the process. Because if things are missed, uh, or if opportunities to make projects, uh, turn out better are missed. Because of the change in process, we want to have conversations about it, because we think there's going to be ways to get it back.
Yeah, and, and I don't want to, um. I, I have a tendency to get hung up on the subjective stuff, I think kind of by nature, and I don't want, I, I understand that, that. Setting that aside allows for, you know, a, a more streamlined process, um, allows for, um, hopefully more housing and. Ease of, of adding the good things that we want, on the other hand, um, if things are going to be built, I really. Would hope, and I'm sure everybody would hope, for the benefit of our community, that it's done thoughtfully and with care, and it's not just. Think about the make house, so, um, I was just wondering, you know, if there's going to be a lot of ministerial. There are going to be a lot of things going through the ministerial process without a, a, kind of a architecturally or aesthetically critical eye. Um, would be consider, because, I mean. It, from, from position, like, you could be here and have one full eye, and then somebody else comes along, and they're like. Pink polka dots and circular windows, and, and actually, it's kind of interesting, but, um. It, it kind of depends on just the singular person in that position, and I just wonder if we might use like, a third-party architect into the, we've used. Um, hey, um, his name's escaping me right now, but that awesome, um, architect. He's fantastic. No, I, I've forgotten his name, I'm just wondering if, if there might be a way to, to maintain that. Like, it doesn't have to be all of us, but it just seems to me that there ought to be somebody. I don't know, in, in that position.
That's something we can, we can look into. Uh, the unfortunate. The unfortunate thing I would say is, I think eight forty San Bruno is going to be the new norm for housing. That, that the developer is going to come in, they're going to know the state law, and they're going to know we can't make them do anything.
Right.
And they're, and, um, and that was a project where, uh, staff had a number of ideas that they did like this much of. Um, which they didn't have to do even that much, so. Thank you for that, and then, uh, came to the planning commission, I think you saw a lot of the same things we did. So, again, in a world of multifamily housing. I actually don't see us losing anything in the ministerial process, because I don't think they're going to do anything unless there's an objective standard. Um, in the case of every other project out there, um. Uh, the idea of having a third, a, a third-party architect, uh, as a consultant to aid staff. Uh, that's something that's, uh, many places I've worked in has, has had. Uh, so, that's certainly something that, that, that we can look at. And even in the case of the multifamily housing projects, um. We can still glean some information from a, a third-party architect, even if we can't force it to happen. Uh, we might be able to, able to talk the developer into some of the less costly ones.
Yeah, I, I understand your hands are, are often tied by state law, et cetera, um. Oh, um, I was just, as I was reading. It's twelve, twelve to eighty-eight sixty, I don't remember what the title was, so.
Pre-application process.
There we go, I was just, I was curious about, um, reducing the public outreach, um, and. I know in, in many cases, public outreach, especially in the case of large multifamily projects, is kind of not useful, but. It is also, even though not much can be done, I feel like communicating to the community is really important, but. You, this is coming, you have no say, but, but like. Prepare yourselves, this is, this is a change that's going to be happening near your home or in your community, um, so I'm just curious. How we can still maintain some sort of outreach connection to the community with the, even if it's the expectation, like, we don't really have much influence, but.
Yes, and I, I think we, we certainly can do it, we as the city can, can do that, we can. Um, let folks know about certain applications, uh, that have come in, uh. We, the, the problem with this particular section is. As it's written, it basically requires an applicant before they even apply. To do this pre-application and have, and have this meeting. Uh, with the way state law is going, and with, uh, with the housing element and such, this. Pretty much is going to fall into what HCD would call as a governmental constraint.
Yeah.
Uh, and so that's why the, the wording's changed to, we, we don't want to get rid of it, but, hey, it's encouraged.
Encouraged.
Uh, that doesn't mean we as a city can't still, uh, through our social media. Uh, whether it's mail notice or other, other methods, let people know of what, what's happening and such, um. But it's just, we, we can't require the applicant necessarily to always do it.
That makes, it makes complete sense, I think, yeah, it, it's just, it came to mind as I was reading it, it makes absolute sense that in, in this situation that. We couldn't maintain that, but I like the idea of still trying to, to find a way to reach out, because. I think it's, I think it's very important, um. I had a really funny little, not so useful thing in twelve, twelve eighty-four two twenty. But it was just confusing, and maybe it was a typo or an error, a misunderstanding of mine, um, outdoor dining. And it was describing the buffers between the dining areas and, and different adjacent uses, and it, I just found it strange that there's only like a one-foot. Um, buffer between dining area and the budding travel lanes. Whereas two-foot buffers were for driveways and parking, I don't know if that means like. The travel lanes isn't like a lane of traffic, it just, as I was reading through, I was like, that's weird, so, that is point.
Yeah, we, we did glean these from a neighboring city, and so we will certainly. Take a look at it, because there really won't be a budding travel lane.
Yeah, unless it's in a, unless it's in a, unless it's a private driveway.
Yeah.
And I think that's what it was like, like, for example, if, if you were to put outdoor dining in one of our, in one of our shopping centers, and it's. Adjacent to a, a drive aisle, I think the one foot is, is to recognize that you can't. You still need to make the drive aisle useful, and if you, so it's like you put a K-rail there, as long as it's a barrier there. Um, but, the part, and, and there, there will be a follow-up with this. With some guy, design guidelines.
Okay.
Uh, which show, you know, if it's a parking lot, you know, and, and you've, you're using two parking spaces for the dining. But then you've got a parking space that's right adjacent, you know, you need peo- you need that two feet for people to be able to open their door and get out of their car. In addition to the space itself, so.
Okay, on the surface, it seems like we're going to have a two-feet separation between. Driveway and, and the space that probably should meet it from the.
Yeah.
A tr- a travel lane type.
I think so.
Like sticking their arm out.
So, and, so through the chair, going up, actually, so, think about the. The stands that they put up in San Francisco, maybe it's not San Mateo anymore, but, so, Millbury, the downtown, there are actually zero distance between. The, the dining area and the traveler.
On the, on the, I need to.
They, they build the, you know, they build that barricade, they build something, there's also the zero distance. A wood, a very glensy.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, just two-by-fours and some type, but, but, I just. Relative to that, looking at it with my eyes and the design guideline, it just seemed a little odd, and I thought it was pulled out there, I don't want to get into too much detail.
It's the K-rail, the buffer.
And, and I, I think what we want to make sure is. Is the designated outdoor dining area, the part that people are actually dining in. And thus, you know, whatever buffer, whether it, however it's built up, counts towards the two feet, or is it from wherever the end of the thing is. There needs to be some space.
Right.
And so I think we, we'll dig into this more and, uh, uh, have more information on the twentieth.
Okay, thank you, it was, it was, it also depends if it's parallel parking versus indoor parking, so.
Right, and this is, and I, and I also probably might be helpful to clarify that we have a whole separate section on our code for parklets, so those are the. Those are the, that's administered by public works, um, those permits, and those, those are for the on-street. Uh, installation, so this section is filling the gap for the private property. So this is just private property.
Got it, okay.
Situations.
Okay, that's a different, that's a different. That's a good, thank you.
Please.
Um, let's see, so we've covered, um, on page nineteen four thirty-two, point zero two zero.
Thirty-two, okay, so that's article two, I believe. No, no, we're, too many things are, hit twelve thirty, what?
Zero three zero.
Yes.
And, is there any, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just a little bit of a fishing stuff. Is there any other body that's going to be authorizing this? Is being removed, definitely, and, uh, is there anybody else authorizing this section?
Twelve thirty-two?
Um, twelve thirty, twelve thirty-two point zero two zero.
Zero two zero, okay, zero two zero, the one above it.
So, I actually saw this first, and then I realized I saw it elsewhere.
Yeah, because I think, uh, there's a section for the processing of tentative and final parcel maps, and then there's a section for the processing of tentative and final tract maps. And they're nearly identical, so the changes made here were simply to. Uh, take out the requirement that the map be a certain size and a certain scale.
Mm-hmm.
And just say that it has to meet whatever the application requirements are.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that allows us to publish, because, I mean, nowadays I don't know that we actually care if it's eighteen by twenty-six, because it's all. It's all in green now, uh, but. As it is now, the only way to change whether it's that size is amending the ordinance. So, there was a number of.
That makes sense.
Um, times where we tried to take that out and just say, it's based on our application requirements.
Yeah, that makes complete sense, and then, uh, twelve thirty-two point one hundred, um, you know, in the past, we used. Required all these copies for different, for different department. And, and I noticed that they've taken out the copies, do you need to, and there, that they have to submit electronic copies?
That's going to be in our application requirements, so, though, yeah, that's. Because we're still saying they have to submit the tentative parcel map and all supporting information.
Yeah.
Um, and our applica- application requirements will list exactly how to do that.
In the plans that was due, they should come in with all these.
Yes.
Plans, right, so, didn't know, but needing to have some line to do about it, or finally, but, you'll handle that piece. Okay, and then, uh, twelve thirty-six one hundred, the initial review.
Yes.
Is there another, there's going to be?
Yes, so, so our existing subdivision regulations. Require an applicant to submit kind of a preliminary review. Uh, we take time to review it, and then we give it back, and then they file a formal application. And. In my view, that's not necessary, uh, because even when they file their formal application. Nine times out of ten, it's not perfect, uh, there's going to be something that's missed, and they're, we're going to send it back to them, and they're going to have to revise it and, and, and. And write it again, so. To, to me, it's already in the filing, uh, the, the filing and distribution and, and review section, that's kind of iterative process that happens as many times as it needs to. So requiring them to do this one thing first.
Yeah.
Just, it, it did seem to be.
Efficient.
Not efficient, and we didn't really lose anything, because until it's ready to be acted on, it's going to stay in the, in the formal process.
That makes sense to me, okay, and then moving on to, uh, article three. Uh, the home occupation component, so it went in there again, not to unreasonably, um, conflict with parking. And, um, I don't have any, any comments on that, but how does that? ADU definitely has an impact to parking, because if they're converting garages, right? So is there any, any comment on that, any feedback or any concern about it? Because people converting their garages, there's no doubt that it impacts the traffic. And, and maybe you can't do anything about that, but it's a state direction.
So if I hear it correctly, you, you, you reference the home occupation section?
Yes, because it indicates that they cannot unreasonably, um, have any conflict with parking, yet an ADU has direct conflict with.
Yeah, I, I, I think as, as you described it, and, uh, Michael chiming in if I get this wrong, we can. Say a home off, can't take a parking, we cannot say.
ADU, I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we've had some, uh, you know, some borderline. You know, commercial, heavy commercial uses proposed in, um, as a home occupation. And so we use this section to basically say, you know, it's not consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood. You know, if you've got customers, like, in the, in the, this one case, they wanted to have a dog washing business, and it was going to be constant. Uh, people coming to their home, you know, all day long, so that's not consistent with a residential. Character of the neigh- of the, of the neighborhood, and it's, um, you know, and it's. And, and in this case, it was, um, in a parking-impacted, you know, area that was, uh, east of El Camino, so. Yeah, so that.
I knew that was tricky.
Yeah.
Because I know it's a state situation, okay, that's good, and, um. Occupation is shock here, right, so shock here kind of. People coming all day long, people who think that it's AM and PM only, but that's not the case, we got part-time, school age, and a lot of different. There's a variety of schedules that take place.
Right.
In fact, um, there are a lot of obstacles in some way applies for, for an application, because. It's regulated by the state and also regulated by, uh, fire department, so when applicant, an applicant knows this, but. Not always, um, but if they were to find a fire department is set to go, they go ahead and go, and they'll tell licensing, but we were given direction by the fire department. Or vice versa, license indicated that we can operate, but the fire department had not, so there is a link in there that. License indicate that we can operate, but the fire department had not, so there is a link in there that. It it always tramples over each other in that situation, so but that's an occupation that has a parking issue. I'm really looking for any feedback or an answer to that, but it is.
Well.
Or board and care homes.
Yeah, but board and care homes and and. Daycare, those are regulated by the state, we cannot regulate them under the zoning, so. Um those those are things we don't, we don't see. And we do get calls and and complaints about them and we, you know, advise them that they they need to. To contact the state licensing um for those of those kinds of issues.
That's the worst thing that one. Someone could say licensing, they could have, you know, run a school before you ever leave yourself. Those obstacles are big when they go to the state instead, but anyway, okay, uh let's see. There is a possibility of a glossary, you know, there was a section there that had C one, C dash one, C dash two, CN, CBD. C dash, all kinds of districts and but we get them, but if there's gonna be an audience. Um the public, is there a glossary or maybe? Present, I'm not quite sure, or maybe not at all, but I'm just.
I believe there's a summary table um of the zoning districts, but. Um it doesn't actually have the, any of the newer districts in them. So we do have a table that that has them all, but as as I said, it doesn't have the mixed use. Um zoning districts which were added to the end of the zoning ordinance. But at some point, when we do make that um summary use table that has all the uses all together, I think we could do the same thing. Uh bring those other zoning districts also and 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 put them on on this list.
Okay, and is there any particular order? Um is there a pattern to it? I can't quite see that.
I think it's just residential, commercial, industrial, and other. Because like. This up here is is the residential, then it goes it goes commercial, administrative research, office. Uh industrial and then open space conservation, PD is just kind of the.
Would it be more confusing if it was alpha on the left column, does that create because it would? It's kind of an alpha in its own way, when we see all the R's together, R all grouped together. Or just make it two.
Yeah, I think I think if we were to relook at this, we would. Put a reference to this section that it is in.
Okay.
Uh and it it turns out that the order that the zoning zoning districts are described. In the ordinance is actually in that order, uh so like we would say. We would have another column that says for the R one rules, look, you can look at twelve ninety-six uh oh oh sixty, R two, oh seventy.
And I think the last one that I have is on falling trees. Um there are trees that fall under emergency situations, we had that happen at school, we had to immediately remember that, and there was. Were two gigantic trees, it fell, fortunately, whereas a guy that happened during halftime, but they were ten-foot tree. Uh or not ten foot, fifty foot tree, it's ten, a ten-story, it seemed like, and uh is there, do they? Do do they need to come back into the city and and give you feedback, the permit process, after the fact, or? Is there anything written anywhere about that? We just actually just removed it without thinking.
Yeah, so.
We went after safety.
Yeah, so in different parts of the of of municipal code, I don't know if it's titled eight or nine. Uh but it's it's a section that uh our community services group has. Um has authority over, it it describes. Uh the handling of 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 street trees as well as as uh the private trees. And what types of thing needs permits and what to do in the emergency situations. And I believe for the most part, if it's emergency, uh uh that's understood, but I believe you're still are supposed to come back. And uh let the city know and we'll do some research, I think you're. Depending on the situation, you may still be asked to plant a replacement, but I don't know how how uh. How strictly that's enforced right now, particularly with the types of 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 falling trees we're having more of.
Yeah, okay, I could say it was the last one, but I do have this one more question. And has there been a study of any other financial impact to the changes that's taken by the game, but there's that some place, it just can't remember.
There hasn't been a study, but uh just the 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 expectation is that. This is going to basically be a net neutral impact on the budget. Uh while fees will drop for the things that don't go uh to as many hearings. We do expect there to be more applications of of those types and and so that might. That might even out, and again, the one of the primary points of this is. To build capacity for staff and planning commission to start doing more of the policy work. Uh and so um by building the capacity. Instead of simply adding staff, cuz adding staff is a large fiscal impact. Uh. This is, I think, a very uh um cost efficient. A approach to being able to do more long-range planning, uh while also trying to trying to. To deliver the planning review of 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 projects that the community expects.
Okay, thank you.
Um I had one, I this is under the section of still being considered by city attorney's office. Article three, twelve zero twelve seventy-eight zero six zero. The the appeals. Twelve seven, I mean there, there are twelve seventy-eight zero six zero. Article three zoning attachment free.
Lots of references to that cuz that's our field section, so. Yes, okay.
So I I guess I was trying to kind of wrap my mind around this and I looked at, you know, it wasn't identified till after December. It's proposed.
You're talking about subsection C, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Proposing to remove it, I guess what would be helpful to me and and rarely been used. I didn't know it existed, but is there a an example or context or hypothetical where you can give me to better understand exactly what is being eliminated?
Yeah, so this section as well as another section of, I think, twelve to ten. So for this section, the planning commission council can call up any decision uh of the director. And the other section, the city council could call up any any decision of uh the ARC and the planning commission. And uh we did put in, in in December, we did put in that we were gonna be inquiring with the. Uh uh attorney's office about the about the legality, uh and and. The due process question is if an individual wants to pull an item up to their hearing body. Does that inherently mean they have an opinion on that? The that they developed outside the hearing and as as the decision makers, you're not supposed to have opinions. On things except uh and base your decision solely on what comes forward at the hearing, and if you already decided you need to call it up. Are you, is there a conflict there? And and should the person then who calls it up have to recuse themselves, in which case no one would ever call it up? And so the recusal question was was is is the question of the attorney's office and they're looking into it. Um I work in some communities that depend on your city attorney who said, yes, that's a conflict. Others have said, no, it it can be okay as long as you're careful with it, but I think the bigger question is. For both sides, uh if we make a system so that the things that are considered major. Does things that are considered super major, like changing the rules, have to go to council? Council in appointing you should have the level of of trust and confidence that for all the big projects. Uh the planning commission is able to handle that, and if somebody is upset with it, they can appeal. And uh the council does purposely make appeal fees not cost recovery. Uh they're normally like twenty-five percent or maybe fifty, it's 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 a. Much less than the cost of the holding the appeal hearing because the purpose is you don't want to discourage someone. From appealing if they have a a a real concern, at the same time, you don't wanna make it free because then people just appeal everything. Uh and so the 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 view here is, and this is totally a policy question where admittedly. We're not sure where the council is gonna end up on it either. Do you want to trust the system and trust the fact that if an issue is significant enough? That people will pay the appeal fee, unless it will go to a uh uh if it's a director's decision, they will come to the commission or if it's a commission decision, it will go to the council. Or do you wanna leave something in that uh? Creates the potential view of uh of of due process uh as well as. In the in the off chance that. There is a. A difference of opinion on the direction of the city at the council level. And one council member wanting uh believing a certain thing isn't isn't right. Should there be the authority that that one individual is able to call as many things up? And then be a part of acting on those when the process otherwise would have not come to them. Uh I don't believe we have that issue now, I've worked in some communities that. Um didn't have this allowed, but if they did. There was an an elected official who was very much against everyone else on that board, and it could have been misused. Uh having said that again, it has not been used in any of our our memories. Uh we don't necessarily see it being used uh in the near future. Uh this is not a right or wrong, it it has to be removed or it has to be kept, it's it's really a judgment call. Um so. With that, if it is kept, we do believe the attorney's office is going to change some uh um aspects of the language. Uh in order to make sure, like, for example.
With regard to conflict dimensions.
Yeah, for example. This section is under the title of appeals. That she that sends the message that this call up is an appeal. You only appeal something if you think it's it, that the prior decision was wrong, and again, you're not supposed to do that, so. If the if it is kept, one of the things attorneys might recommend is don't put it in the appeal section. Put it in some other, you know, call-up section, uh same with the part in uh uh. That is the council calling up of the planning commission, so. What I think is gonna happen is they'll either be acceptance to take it out and see how it goes or uh change it. Maybe move it to a different section uh to reduce the chances of any type of, you know, legal issues in the future.
And question on that, so um in reading it, I'm not sure. If you left it in, wouldn't someone have to make us aware of the project in the first place in order for a member of the planning commission to actually. But cuz we wouldn't be dialed into your day-to-day decisions, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, it makes sense to get rid of it just for that, it's a problem, I mean, what I'm gonna be repeating.
And there is that a that you make, and that that ties into cases that I've heard has had helped happen in other communities that uh have had this in in this region. Uh someone who was unhappy with a a decision would just come to a planning commissioner.
Right.
And say, hey, I don't wanna pay the appeal fee, can you just call it up? And so, you know, again. It it has the potential to be misused, uh at the same time, the opposite of this is in the ordinance. Uh that the director can refer anything up. Um and so, you know, assuming we stay in a situation where we're kind of a healthy organization where the council has confidence. In the city manager's office, planning commission has confidence in the staff. If something is truly controversial to the nth degree and somehow is administrative. In all likelihood, it's gonna get referred up. But at the same time, one could say. Uh we don't wanna have this because what if there is possibly an elected official with with a motive? What if there's a point where the council staff relationship isn't good and? This it might be viewed as needed, it it's it's a judgment call that that planning commission and and council. Doesn't need to decide which which feels more like Sandberg.
I I guess my my reading of that, it's more of a, it's kind of a philosophical thing on the streamlining process and. Ensuring that the planning commission still remains in a position to weigh in on render judgment on some of these things. Uh and and maybe maybe if the city manager's office looks at that, you know, maybe there's a limit, right? You can all of three. Right, I I I don't wanna characterize, I hear what you're saying, but there's an element of where I still think we should be able to weigh in, councilwoman can. I I remember Mike, when we voted on the the food trucks in Tepra. And uh I hang out there even though I voted against it, right? I voted against it because I didn't want Michael to solely decide to change the days of the week. That they can have those food trucks out there, I thought that should come back to planning. I was four to one, but I wanted to be clear that I wanted to make sure that we weighed in on that those dates and times are gonna be changed. So I I feel like I wanna make sure that as we go into the twentieth, that. It's important for me to understand if we're streamlining these things to be efficient. That the planning commission still feels in a position, that's why we're here, so that we can weigh in and provide a kind of a. A judgment of that, and I I would I would favor not re-eliminated it, eliminating it, I would favor, you know, maybe limiting, you know. If some of council or planning commission wanted to call it up. You know, one per calendar year or something to kind of avoid and kind of put a threshold on that abuse. But I just don't feel comfortable, at least at this moment, eliminating it, but that's fine, that's okay.
Good job.
Yes, please. So. At this juncture, are we looking for like, should we leave it in or take it out, or are we just kind of reviewing it at this point?
At this point, any any feedback or comments uh on anything about keep it, take it out, change it. Is 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 very useful.
I personally would like to keep it, we've never used it. Um but I don't feel as commissioner, it's appropriate for me to take away. Or suggest taking something away that should be seen councils for you. So I mean, the the question really should go to them, whether they wanna keep that or not.
I mean, in the end, all these ordinance changes are going to them. Planning commission will make a recommendation and if, for example, they.
How how we just highlight that for city council when it goes to them?
Yeah.
So that they're aware that they need to make a decision on that line.
And and we're absolutely going to, which is is why this isn't blue or or purple, it was it was kind of the hey. It's interesting, cuz this is a change.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Good job.
Please.
Talking about that level of thinking, going back on on Kelly's comment on your on the arc review. Um and it would probably be this piece a little bit, but you know, it is where we used to have our hands-on things, I'll give you two examples. That were that were not commented on by staff, it's not at all to indicate whether it was a right or wrong, but just an example. There were the sign, the sign that was at the at the dentist. Um the laser sign and it's green with the sort of a southwest pinky orangey. Right on Camino, that was that was there. And then there was a grocery store wanting to come up, and I believe it was in San Bernardino, or I think it might have been Montrose before or Michigan, I think. But it was the same color, same everything, but it was being denied, recommended for denial from the staff. And when we brought it up and had the discussion, it ended up that they were able to keep their sign, and so. I'm concerned for some of those types of things, uh Milk Park was huge, there were the design that came to us. We had a couple of arc review meetings, Kelly's input was incredibly important. There were changes, the developer came back with with the changes in the plan, it was really a huge difference. And I'm not saying the staff has to figure those things out, but because I think that what's on the plate and all that's taking place. That attention to detail, each one of us bring a perspective to the table, how can we be reassured that at that level? There were those, they have a different perspective, but coming from from a staff point of view, not from a each one of us who brings. Our own expertise to the table, so we talked about an outside body, maybe, you know, having an architect, a third party. So we talked about an outside body, maybe, you know, having an architect, a third party. Um, I don't know that that would be. I, 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 I feel a little, I feel somewhat hesitant that that will get the detail that we're used to giving. And, and what I opposed to how it's going, I wanted to, it would be more efficient to streamline and and it provides all the things that are important, but there's just that piece that I know how many times I've served on arc review and saw the value that's been included into it. I mean, you'll see that coming to staff at that particular time, because I would, I would think that they were invited to that recommendation at that meeting. So only staff could probably, um, answer that. But anyway, that's, that's my, my piece on it.
One thing I would, uh, intro- introduce is again, the, the world of multi-family housing is, is over here where there's not much that can be done. Everything else, however the process ends up with the thresholds are for what comes to planning commission and what's administrative. Uh, there's an opportunities to, to develop more detailed standards and guidelines for non-residential. Uh, things that the, uh, whether it's about signage, whether it's, uh, uh, parking lots are, are laid out, whether it's about commercial sites. Uh, that can be something that we ask councils for funding to develop. So that the types of projects that are administrative that, uh, planning commissioner might be worried about, we would have that lens of, of, of some of these. Now, you would, you would have to be able to through the process, we'd have to document what those type of concerns are. But at the same time, uh, want to, uh, want to clarify, the thresholds for what will come to planning commission always. Uh, if, 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 that is, if it's, um, adding a new building with a little caveat that, uh, um, adding the staff report that we do think if it's an accessory structure on like a commercial lot outside of the view, we don't think that needs to come to planning commission. But any new building short of that, the way the thresholds are, it's coming to planning commission. There's no, there's no added.
That's correct.
And then, uh, addition over 10% to a building. Um, and the 10% is not a magic number. If, if the planning commission thinks that should be a smaller percentage so that more things come, that, that's right, it could be 5%. We chose 10, nothing magic about it. And then, uh, I think the other threshold was like a cumulative 10,000 square feet addition. Uh, so even if the site was such that that 10,000 square foot addition wasn't 10%. If you go over 10,000 cumulatively, you're automatically going to be here. So if it's a really big site and you're, uh, over 10,000, it's coming to planning commission. For all kind of the medium to small, a, a 10% change to a building, it's coming to planning commission. And then a new building, again, except for the new exception of accessory structure not in view, uh, that's coming to planning commission. So, so that then leaves if it's, um, a small addition to a building or it's like an accessory structure outside of view. So uh, Mills Park, unless it went through the ministerial process, because it's all housing, absolutely, it's at planning commission. Um, the Stein one, that I think is the type of conversations that, uh, uh, weren't developing more detailed guidelines so that as we review signs, um, we can make sure, one, do some of the signals need to change? Uh, are they too strict? Are they not strict enough? Are there certain things that need to be, need to be timed up? I think all of those are opportunities. So, uh, uh, please, when the type of things come to your mind where you're like, this is the type of thing that I think we as the commission need to see. Uh, please do bring those up, whether at the meeting or, or, uh, offline, because there's a lot of ways to make sure that it, it, it gets handled.
Yeah, I, I absolutely support, you know, as I mentioned prior, I support the process by, by all means. It's just the other's a roller for sleeping, you're sitting there. And I don't, that doesn't happen at the commission meetings. We are not moving. Like, okay, when someone draws something and does something else, and that's just not the way it's conducted in the, I don't believe it can be conducted. I, you know, just think we have a trusted process along the way and have prepared to have more input and, uh, and also meetings could go longer just because there, there is more work to be done. And that's okay. And I'm ready to see how it works.
Just, I, I appreciate that. I again, I, I asked, don't, don't assume it can't happen. Like, if like for example, of, of the non-residential project that we, uh, we uh, bring it forward early. What if that's in a study session format? And what if we are around the table?
Yeah, that, that's encouraging.
There's nothing that says we can't do that. We need to have the room. We need to have it set up to do that.
I like that thinking.
The, the, the rack building is having a room set up for the council chambers. It's also going to be a room for the planning commission. It's large enough that we just set the tables up a little differently. And the cameras might not be able to see everything as well, because it's more of a meeting where, uh, you know, staff and the applicant and the commission are like all together around the table. Uh, the public can still attend and observe. Uh, so there's, again, there's still ways to get at some of the things that, 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 uh, that happened in the past. Um,
I'm encouraged.
Yeah.
Great. Peter, please. Peter, so my one concern as a planning commissioner has always been the, making sure that everybody who shows up at a meeting gets a chance to speak. And there's a lot of items that are going to be coming because of state law that just, it's not going to happen anymore. What can we do to reach out or outreach for people so that stuff that is approved and they start seeing buildings coming up? Could we have pages on our website maybe with all of these listed or maybe like the, this brief staff report or something like that? So that if someone asks me, what is that thing going over there? I can refer them to the website and they can, they can't say anything about it. They can't complain, but at least they can see what that project's going to be.
Yeah, we do, yeah, we do have that on, it is on the website. It's a little varied, the development activity. We have a page for each. We have a page for each project and we try to keep it up to date as we can.
Okay. And, and I, I think, I think the, the, this is another thing that I think will be very good for its own study session to have the conversation about what are the things, because admittedly a staff report and what, what we put on a website doesn't translate to, you know, the average person.
Yeah.
Uh, what are the types of things? A, a study such a topic could be, what are the types of topics and pieces of information and messaging that we need to provide? Uh, how can we provide it? And it could be, you know, workshop where we're looking at the website and maybe we're looking at, at, at some others, just you're going to be able to tell us much better, what are the questions they have?
Right.
What are the types of things they want to know? Uh, um, what are ways we can put something together? Like, of all the state limitations, what are the ones we should work on putting together something for the public to let them know? Maybe we put it in a, a, a utility go insert, uh, you know, this type of dialogue, because there's so much changing, as, as you're saying. And so talking about what we do now that works and what we can do better. And again, if, my hope is there's more time to do those types of things as well as on ring planning. Um, because we're making some of these things that admittedly people aren't attending and coming to, we're making that an easier process so that we can handle the things that the community is actually concerned with.
A lot of times people are at the meetings and they're pretty upset about something and they're really expressing their opinion and they haven't done their homework or they haven't. You know, it's posed a lot of different factors. It's been distributed in many ways that they haven't got the information for whatever reason.
Yeah.
And so once they're informed, it diffuses a lot of things and it's almost, um, and so it's a matter of how can we be proactive to help that process of people don't feel, uh, because I think that when they start to feel like I didn't do my work, they only get angrier. No one wants to feel stupid, right?
I'd like to piggyback on that because that's part of what the engagement that I've experienced with people in public meetings. They come and they want to express their opinions and be heard. And yet, like some of these projects that we have to approve, and then they go storming out of the meeting because they feel like, well, I I'm impotent, I can't get anything done here, right? So maybe we can work out some sort of messaging that, not to point the finger at anybody, but it kind of like takes the onus off the staff and, and city council and everybody else that, hey, this is just something we have to do, you know, because I think somewhere there's going to be some pushback eventually from all of this, so that we can approve. So I mean, if we kind of get ahead of that is what I'm thinking.
I think, as soon as you said that, uh, that is, that maybe one of those types of projects that are going through the questions is there any way of having, um, a pre-meeting, um, that you just informationally maybe if, if the need that thirty to six or sixty, six thirty, that there's a need that if you want some information on, that there'll be some information about that posted and questions. Uh, just sort of we're educating at all times. I don't know how I can position quite yet, but some information in place. So people are aware they're coming to gather. Because no matter if you're having things at the library or other places, most of the time people don't show up and maybe it's Zoom. But informational, even if it's on Zoom, uh, prior, you know, prior to a meeting.
On the, the, the great, or not one's a great, uh, if we put something together, like let's say it's an informational session and it's just about, um, I mean, let's even start on, on the flip side, let's not assume, uh, all, all, all the stuff that people don't like about state law. ADUs, there's still people who don't realize what they can do with them. And if, uh, in the housing element, the state wants us to commit to doing a better job of informing people and letting them know what's available and, uh, if we had some type of Zoom meeting, uh, that was put together with the purpose of having a recording that people could uh, watch, not just that they have to actually be, but we're not talking about a specific project. We're just talking in general about ADUs. Or in general about this type of thing. So you're, it's on brown act, we're not talking about project.
Yeah.
We're, are you still brown act at the meeting that has to be open to the public, but we're not talking about a specific project.
Education.
Uh, it's, it, it, informational, educational. So all, all of those things are possible and 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 the other thing is it's done somewhere. Some city somewhere has done something for each of these topics. And so another part of it is, is, is us just, uh, uh, keeping in touch with, uh, um, like the association of, uh, uh, the American Association of Planners and stuff and stuff like, just who's doing this, who's doing that? And, and if we can just copy something and just adjust it for us, um, we're open to all those type of things. Cause I mean, in the end, having the community understand what and why things are happening, uh, it, it's better for all of us. They're, they're still going to be upset at all sorts of things, which is perfectly fine. But they'll, they'll at least know more of the why.
So Peter, one other question for the city attorney. Um, I know on those projects that we cannot hinder them, we can't delay them. I'd like to make sure that if we do do something like that, that it's not construed as a delaying technique or tactic or, or purposefully, um, oh, yeah, it was submerging or sabotaging their, their project.
If, if, for example, we had if we had a part of our work plan for like the housing element that we're going to do these type of things on these type of topics. And we got around to the multi-story, multi-family project. And that happened to, and we don't mention the project. I don't see any issue. If we did have a program and the one project comes up that we're concerned with, and we choose that time to have this special meeting about this topic. I still don't think that there's legally a problem, but it could, it's going to be viewed probably by H C that it looks suspicious. Did you, you had this meeting out of nowhere about this one topic at the same time you're processing this. So, so I, I think because we are committing very much to the housing element, they're trying to do morale, we do everything. As long as, 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 as we're waiting, I, I wouldn't worry about there being any type of, of, of of negative outcomes.
Okay. So I, I just had a flash on one other suggestion, perhaps maybe. I know that at the architectural review meetings, we would, at the end of it, they would tell us, um, they would review like whatever signs were approved or something like that. Perhaps at the end of the planning committee, planning commission meetings, um, these projects that are going on outside of our review, maybe once they're approved and then I don't want to have anything to do with it. Or perhaps you could just throw a slide up with an image of what it is and just a quick description of, hey, this is what we approved up here and over there. I think that would go.
And we want to do that for multiple, multiple reasons, uh, because also as more things become administrative actors, now, again, admittedly, the administrative actors are going to be the small things.
Right.
Uh, unless it's the ministerial multi-family project, that is big, which is why we made it red and stuff. Uh, the other things are going to be relatively small, but we do want to make it very easy for anyone interested to come to our website and see what's been acted on, large or small.
Great.
Uh, thus, we'd simply be showing you stuff that we'd already be doing. So it, it, it'd be, it'd be no problem. Yeah.
That would be great.
I look forward to the data. That is a consistent message that we get that San Bruno is a, is a great place to apply for a permit and gets processed, it gets all the way through and it's that it's a really great place because right now we don't have the reputation. And
I'm no fear.
I look forward to that. That goes a lot, sometimes the calls that I get, uh, why, why? I'm going to get involved in that, but those are the calls I get.
To the chair? Just to, to, I, I, I agree. But to go back to what Rick was saying about, uh, communicating with the public about what's going on and, um, I have found that the, uh, city manager newsletter has been really, really helpful in informing the general public. I read it every time I'm like, how did it get to San Bruno? Um, I find it really helpful. I don't know if, um, as a planning department, we could do something, doesn't necessarily have to be a newsletter. It could be something we could link to through the, the city manager's newsletter. Or maybe we have, you know, websites with a blotter bulletin board about, hey, this is what's going on and making it maybe through social media. I don't know. I mean, there's so many avenues, but um, I've just found that to be really, the newsletter is super, super helpful. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think there's lots of opportunities in there, yes. There's no other questions about the three hundred and ninety?
Interesting.
Can, can, uh, we come back to, uh, the one suggestion about the B M R on, on ministerial? Would like to hear what, what, what other thoughts are on that, because if, if there is a interest in making that type of adjustment, the idea would be to adjust it with the twentieth.
We go back to that.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and all we're saying, you know, my, my thought on this is that we just haven't seen enough development anyways. Uh, and so in order to promote, you know, as much as we can, two projects with fifteen percent is better than one, one, thirty percent. I'll say that.
Yeah, and a- along those lines, uh, that reminds me of, uh, something that H C D, uh, uh, a statement that H C D has, uh, fifteen percent of zero to zero. It's like, if you make your B M R so tough that no one builds, then you get nothing. So right now, the second, uh, the second way a site can qualify for ministerial requires them to make more of their project, um, as B M R units. Uh, so what, what was, what the other option is, is um, actually, in that case, in that case, I'm not sure. Uh, and the suggestion was to just say. Meet the B M R ordinance.
Yeah.
So I mean, in that case, we're saying if you're multi-family. And meet the B M R ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
You're, so. This line can get a lot shorter. Because we wouldn't have to put the cap, the, the qualification of, of, of the B M R. Now, the housing element says the minimum of twenty percent. You making the ordinance so that just meet the B M R. That is more housing friendly, I would say, and so I don't think you have to worry that. This doesn't align with what the housing element says. You're, you're, I was, I would say you're going in actually an extra step. Uh, if instead you said, well, I want to make it so that, you know, you know, fifty percent of, of the units are, are, are affordable. Well, then H C would be like, no, that's, 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 you know, too much and stuff, so, um. I think it just comes down to, do you want to use the ministerial process as a way to try to get more affordable units? Or should we just focus right now, let's use the ministerial process to just get more units?
Please. Um, we've seen so many things come before us and we've spent so much time and care and thought and. Nothing's been built and. And it's, it does seem familiar, there's gonna be a case where like, we just need to make it excess, more excessive for them to build something. I would, I would even find it to just go with the, the B M R.
Anybody not agree with that?
I actually need to read this again, so if we, if we, essentially what I'm proposing is that we delete. The second criteria. Right?
No.
Because then, well, what, because one of two criteria meet and the second criteria is just to meet the current development standard.
Well, the first one is you're on our housing list and as long as you propose a number of units, we said. We called for you to do. Your ministerial. The second one was you're not on our housing element list, but you're somewhere that allows multi-family housing. And at the time it was, and you're doing more B M R.
Yeah.
So, um. I mean, it's.
Yeah, okay. In, in the, the first is really A is multifamily housing development that complies with all objective development regulations of the municipal code. And so. And so. What? And, and then two becomes redundant with A. And so really then just any multifamily. Yeah, just anything.
Yeah, it's just anything because.
Yeah, so if we change that to the current B M R standard, then it's just anything.
Because if, if, if the view is, let's get as many as we can. But again, I'm not saying that's wrong in, in any way. We shouldn't say if you're a housing element site, you have to do the number of units that the housing element called for. Because if you're not a housing element site, you do however much, much density that you want to. And you get to be ministerial. It's almost like. If we, if we don't have this added layer of something someone has to do. Then we're actually punishing housing elements.
Right, 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 right.
And then maybe it's just, as, as you said, we just take one in, two out, and if you're just a multifamily home that complies with all the objective standards. You're ministerial.
Right. So, and what's the difference between that and the by right? Zoning anyways, I mean.
So.
Uh, because I see because the.
So, so there's certain things in state law that, um. Like, for example, state law says if you're a housing element site. Uh, under certain circumstances, and you provide twenty percent lower, you get to be ministerial. There's a state law that says that. So what we were doing for number one is more lenient than state law. We're saying you don't have to do extra B M R. If you're on our list and you build what we're, we, we programmed for you to build. You're ministerial, so we were being. Nicer than the state there. Uh, then the second one was, well. If the state says that housing element sites under certain cases that do twenty percent. Can be ministerial, what if we said, even if you're not a housing element site, but if you do that twenty percent, you can be ministerial. But if we wanted to say if you're multifamily housing. Because we need it, you are ministerial. Then this is lots of.
I mean, and specifically, if you fall within all the zoning and development.
Yeah, yeah. Now, having said that, um. If someone uses a density bonus to do waivers to not meet certain of our objective standards. We're still gonna say you meet them because state law lets them. Not meet them.
Yeah, right.
Uh, so, so. We, we took the approach of, hey, here's where state law is, let's take one step. One step further. What, what I hear the planning commission interested is we need housing so bad. It's just, if you're multifamily. You, you can have a ministerial process because we need that housing that bad.
Yeah, I, I think I'm in agreement with that and the reason is we've already said. You know, the zoning, right? So we've already told this public, we want you to build this high and we've already put some boundaries around it. And so as long as they're building within those boundaries that have been set. Then you don't have to come back to the planning commission. And ask for anything. What we'd be looking at in the future then is anything that needs a variance. And the, you know, anything that needs to go through CECL. Oh, that's it, right?
So by being ministerial, there's no sequel. So if we have zoned it to allow X units.
Right, right, right.
They can, they can, they can propose X units plus the density bonus.
I understand, so I'm saying, you know. In the future, you know, us, our jobs will only be reviewing things that need CECL because they're not ministerial. Things that need a variance because it's not ministerial. I guess that's it really, right?
On the multifamily housing set, on the commercial, industrial, it's. We still get to review all the same thing. Okay, so.
The question is, will that truly promote development? What's, I mean, what's the cost of going through the planning process? When you, when you, when you buy right? Yeah, so you know you're gonna get, you're gonna get it. But you still have to go through the, the process with planning commission.
So.
What's, what's the cost and what's the risk? How, how much is that really impacting?
We don't know the dollars, but the magnitude is such that. That I strongly believe. That the average. Experienced housing developer would jump at the twenty percent. In order to not have to go through the hearing losses. Which is only, I, I mean, I didn't put, we didn't put that in to be a, 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 a standard that couldn't be achieved. We thought. Because the other part of the aspect is we absolutely do need units. But we need the more affordable units.
Right.
As many of the, of the, of the, of the deep restricted units as we can get. So the idea is if we can use this as a way to entice people to give a little bit more. But they get value out of it. By saving money on their process because they save X number of months and, and, and such, uh. That was the, that was, that was the idea.
I mean, when it's by right though, because this is all, essentially it's, they're within the boundaries anyways. Right? We're not talking about things with variances. So in that case, how much are they really saving in time and?
So even, even though legally. Like, let's, let's say eight four, eight forty seven, even though legally. Staff was advising you, you had to approve it, there are still planning commissions that don't. And, and now that normally results in the court, uh, normally results in appeal to a council in the council then. Depending on how they listen to their city attorney, uh, might overturn it and, uh, approve it there. Or maybe it gets tied up in court, um, uh. But that's months. You're adding months now to a process, uh, so, so by right. Is legally good in the long run, but ministerial to most of the housing developers is extra sweet. Because there, there is no error. It is possible that staff could still take an action that they find illegal, uh. Uh, and, you know, sue us over, but. I think they're less worried about that.
To me, you should keep this, um. The escalation cost for one month, say like a mill, say it's fifty, sixty million dollar project. Looking at minimum three hundred grand a month in escalation costs on the project. We, number two, would, you know, certainly cut maybe four to five months off the cost potentially and then we jump at it. So I, I think I agree with you. That, that is a big deal.
I'm sorry, I'm a little something.
And that's why nothing's getting built. Construction costs are just out of. Well, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not arco rancosis. This is, this is, um, things don't pencil out because there's, can't build big enough.
The thing I will say about the process is. That the process takes too long to miss its cycle. Or you, or you then get stuck because of this huge increasing cost.
Yeah.
Um. But again, it, yeah, it, it was intended to be a carrot that we believed would. They would, uh, the average developer would be very willing to do.
So just to be clear, it still seems that in your opinion. The, the ministerial quality is so attractive to a developer that twenty percent is not gonna phase them.
Yes, that's, that's our view.
Oh, okay.
If, if we thought it would phase them, we want to put it in.
Okay, okay, because thi- this is something I don't have any experiences, so really, you guys know the temperature and, and the.
And, and again, if we set fifteen percent. And we leave the lower income, that is still better than what we have now. Because right now, our fifteen percent is. Five of it is moderate income and moderate income, uh, for apartments. They're almost not worth the administrative work it takes to handle it because the rent's too close to actual market. Uh, so that's that, so. Anyway. A middle ground might be, turn the number to fifteen.
Yeah, I, I, so I'm gonna, um. I'm gonna propose still that it's, reduce it to the fifteen. Um, and, and really it's, it's about numbers, right? You say the twenty percent will phase them. And, and you can make an argument in San Francisco, the great part to do twenty-five percent, but really it all comes down to numbers. Um, what's the cost? What's the rents? Um, and then the timing in between is, is something else, but. You know, we have no control over construction costs and, and market rents and things like that. And so if this can flip on just one or two more projects, like, like with fifteen, I think that's something that I would support.
Yeah, actually, please, so. Going back to my old grocery store days, I would leave those two by, two items in because. If you put something on sale and you don't put a sign on it that shows people it's for sale, they're gonna walk right past it. By leaving this in here, the developer that comes along and looks at this. It's gonna be highlighted to him that that's what we're trying to accomplish rather than just leaving the header up there. So I, I, I kind of agree, I, the, the fifteen or the twenty percent, I, I, I have no opinion on that. But I do think we should leave it in so that people looking at this down the line are encouraged to think in the direction that you're putting up there.
So at this point, we will, uh, we'll look, we'll look more at, at this number. Uh, and. Again, if on the twentieth, you know, the thought is, no, stick with twenty. You can put in your motion and it's just an easy change of stuff, uh, or if it's other minor wording changes, easy to do on the twentieth. Um, but I am getting the sense that now after talking about it, there is a desire to keep these. Two criteria is just what's the second one and not making it too hot.
The fifty-five years, is that standard?
Yeah.
Okay.
There, there is, there are some who talk about, and some cities are like trying to make it like forever.
Ninety-nine years.
The ninety-nine years, that's ninety-nine. I'm, I'm not sure that's, when something is fifty-five years old, that apartment building is not going to. Be at the same price as a newer place.
Yeah.
And so I think it was originally set at fifty-five way back when this concept first came out because by that time.
It makes sense.
In theory, they should be moderate. Maybe even low, probably not very low, uh. So.
I would argue a shorter lifespan is actually better. Think about how an apartment looks after thirty years.
Yeah.
It's like, they're bad, they're, you don't want. Um, and if they're affordable units, where's the money gonna come from to renovate them? And so to have them flip on and off is, is usually better. You need that re-injection of capital.
So we're in the information on the aperture apartments, how many are affordable, we just don't recall, remember moving out. And what, uh, what's the vacancy?
Cause I, I was under the impression that rental that had alone was the, our only one B M R.
Yeah, I think, I, I believe aperture is, I think, market, market rate, um. Right, because it was approved as a P V, Plan Development. Before.
It just kept.
Our inclusionary requirement, so I think it's market rate.
I can tell you that. Those apartments are running at full occupancy, so that typically means ninety, ninety-three percent over here. Um, anything B M R is one hundred percent occupied. And they're very competitive to get.
Okay, so, uh. As I said, the package you get for the twentieth, there'll be a new version of some highlight or calling out of things changed since this package. They'll primarily, I think, be from the attorney's office for, uh, uh, inclusion of things. And as I said, much like with the subdivision section, the things that they changed were either. Tightening up a law, uh, responding to a, a, a court case, but not really changing. The process in, in, in any way, so, um. That'll be on the twentieth, if, uh, you're able to make a recommendation at that meeting. We would be shooting for the twelfth of March for council and all of that falls into trying to get this in effect. With the new fees on, on July one.
Very nice.
Can you give us some extra lead time while we did on this?
Oh. It depends on when we get the info from the attorney.
As much as you give us would be appreciated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so that ends this item.
Yep, you can, you, you get to adjourn, adjourn us to the February Sunday meeting.
Yeah, right. So we're adjourned to our next meeting, next planning commission meeting.